Good evening. The City of Bothell Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, November 19th, will come to order. At this point in our agenda, are there any non-agenda public comments hearing from any members of the public with us this evening? Hearing none, we have no minutes to approve. I believe we have no new business, other than what's on our agenda. So we'll move forward right away with continuing the public hearing of the City of Bothell 2015 Periodic Plan and Code Update. For those of you in the audience, we've been conducting these hearings, actually this is one long hearing, and this is the continuation of it, in which we're doing a refresh of the City of Bothell Strategic Plan. This has not happened very often, about every eight years. And some of the things that we've worked on are elements and strategies that span the entire city, but also we also have a specific strategic plan for each subarea. We call them subareas. They could be neighborhood, you might call them neighborhoods. Bothell has seventeen of them. Tonight we'll be discussing four, which is quite a full agenda. And there are three of them, three of the four, that this is actually going to be a second review of this, and then an initial review of a fourth. So at this point, I'm going to turn the agenda over to Mr. Bruce Blackburn, who will give us a presentation on, I believe, two of the four subareas, if that's correct.
That's correct. And then it'll be followed immediately by a presentation from Dave Boyd.
And then we'll have a presentation from Dave Boyd. So at this point, we'll turn it over to Mr. Blackburn.
There you go. Good evening, Chair, Commissioned Members and Members of the public. As you identified, this is a part of the 2015 Periodic Update of the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan and the Bothell Municipal Code. Now, this is the second Planning Commission public hearing on the West Hill and Brickyard Road and Queensgate subareas, as well as the Maywood-Beckstrom Hill subarea plans. This will be the initial public hearing on the Waynita-Symonds-Norway Hill subarea plan. Now, I'm going to start off with two subarea plans, the West Hill subarea plan and the Brickyard Road subarea plan, actually Brickyard Road-Queensgate subarea plan. And as you identified, the subarea plans provide a little bit more detailed planning information within these certain geographic areas, which kind of include neighborhoods, or one or two neighborhoods, or something like that. And it helps to establish a specific desired character within each of these areas. And we have a lot of different characters everywhere, from the downtown to the West Hill. They have different types of land uses, different types of approaches, different kinds of appearances. And it's where the subarea plans come in that we really refine how we want these areas to look like. Now, within the West Hill and Brickyard Road subarea plans, the Planning Commission already conducted an initial review of these subareas. And that was kind of a technical review of correcting some of the provisions that we've had that kind of matched some of the other things that we've done within our elements, as well as, of course, to kind of update some of those plans because they were last really looked at in 2004. Now, within these two subareas, we have two requests. Within the West Hill subarea, we have a request from a property owner named Mike Hughes. And within the Brickyard Road and Queensgate subarea, we have a request from Ms. Colleen Hallett and the Spatation-Nelson and O'Day requests. And within the West Hill subarea, I'm going to talk a little bit about this. This is, of course, Mr. Michael Hughes. He's on this location here. Get a little bit closer view of it. This is basically just east of 88th Avenue. And what you've got with your packet is a more detailed analysis from the staff of each of these individual provisions. And I've just kind of highlighted some of the provisions here that help us a little bit. I've identified what the acreage is. Now unfortunately, Mr. Hughes identified that somehow I grabbed the wrong acreage number from the webpage. It's actually 4.84 acres, so it's a little bit smaller than what the 6.54 acres are that I show right here. Some of the highlights, of course, we've identified what some of the surrounding zoning is, and some of the surrounding land uses, predominantly single-family. This is basically where this subarea has. Now, we actually have a capacity analysis that we do, basically that kind of gives an estimate of how many lots that we believe each piece of property could have. And with that revised number, we're actually, the current capacity is about fifteen lots, seventeen lots, and the revised capacity underneath the request, which is an R-7200 designation, is about twenty-three lots. This basically gives you a little bit better idea of what the surrounding zoning is. This is, of course, Mr. Hughes' property right here. This is 88th Avenue right here. And you can see that we have a lot of R-7200 zoning that surrounds Mr. Hughes' property. His is R-9600. Now, what occurred here was that the City of Bothell in February just did an annexation of these areas. And when the City of Bothell did that annexation, we had to match the capacity analysis that King County had previously established within their zoning provisions. Now, one of the reasons the capacity analysis is important is that state law, under the Growth Management Act, assigns certain population targets for each county, city, and other jurisdiction that is doing planning underneath the Growth Management Act. King County has a certain capacity that we had to accept when we did the annexation. Thus, the City of Bothell, when we did the annexation, we had to match as close as possible the King County zoning that was in the place. It previously was what's called an R-6 designation. That matches closest to the City of Bothell's R-7200 designation. So what occurred was that Mr. Hughes' property was suddenly surrounded by zoning classification of R-7200, where he has an R-9600. He was previously in the City of Bothell. So what we've done is, we've done an analysis on this, and staff recommends that we do change Mr. Hughes' property to an R-7200. It makes a lot of sense, because it matches what's existing in this area and complies very closely to what was in King County, as well as what will be in the future within the City of Bothell. Now, we did discuss with this property owner here, who has a current R-9600. We asked him if they would be interested in some kind of change, and they indicated that they really were not. They were happy with their lot the way it was. They really didn't see any need to have a change in their rezoning. So their request was to keep this the same. Now certainly, the city has the option of applying a different zoning category if we determine that it makes a lot of sense to do so. But in this case, you know, it probably is really okay to keep it as an R-9600. Now, within the Brickyard Road and Queensgate subareas, there are two property owner requests. One is from Ms. Colleen Hallett, and the other is from the Spatations-Nelson and O'Day. And basically, the location is, this is the Hallett, and this is the Spatation-Nelson and O'Day. The Hallett is just off of Riverside Drive, I'm sorry, Woodenville Drive, and the Spatation-Nelson and O'Day is just off of 160th and 124th Avenue. And I got a little bit closer provision. I'm going to talk about the Hallett first. And essentially what this is, this is a site, it is located just south of Woodenville Drive, and it's located next to the Wine Valley Siding Facility, as well as, of course, there is a city shop facility that's just right next to them. And you can see, the designation right now is GC, or General Commercial. That is probably the most intense commercial zone the City of Bothell does, other than light industrial, which is kind of basically a warehousing-type facility. So these are very intense land uses. Particularly the Wine Valley Siding, they basically prepare siding for houses, and they do distribution, wholesale, and all those kind of things. And of course, the city shops is a, you know, it's a heavy equipment is out there, the storage of facilities and materials and things of that nature. That's why this area is designated as general commercial. Now, I've identified some of the surrounding land uses. You know, you've got the city shops, the Wine Valley. And of course, on the west is, of course, the Interstate 405 freeway. Now, on the capacity analysis for this, because it's a general commercial, it's an employees' kind of a capacity. It's not necessarily population. And we estimate there could be anywhere from three to twenty employees on this piece of property. The applicant has requested an R-9600 or equivalent zoning category, and it's primarily to help avoid a very large tax assessment they're basically faced with. The other thing, of course, is this has historically been a single-family residence for, you know, for decades, frankly. And basically, what the applicant is requesting is that we change it to the existing use that's out there. Now, we've kind of taken a pretty good look at this, and this was a tough one, because we're very sympathetic with their situation, that they have a tax assessment for a piece of property they're not using for that higher designation. Unfortunately, we're kind of driven in this situation by good planning practices, which includes a very good analysis of what surrounds you, and what the future should bring, and what is the most logical land use, more than just trying to take care of something like a tax assessment or some other criteria. So staff's recommendation is to retain the GC, or General Commercial, designation on this piece of property, even though, you know, the property is currently used as a single-family residential. It'd be really tough to change this to a single-family residential designation, because it would kind of insert an incompatible use into a commercial area. And I know that sounds kind of funny, because, oh, well, everybody thinks of it, well, commercials should be able to coexist everywhere. But it'd kind of be, if you were to reverse that, say, okay, if you had a big single-family area, you'll put a big commercial area in it, you'd call that certainly incompatible. Well, it's kind of the same situation here. It's just not appropriate to have a single-family residential use and among a bunch of general commercial type of designations. The other one is, of course, the Nelson-O'Day request. And this is basically just off of the northwest quadrant, at the intersection of 160th and 124th Avenue. To the east is the City of Woodenville. And this is involving an area that was recently annexed to the City of Bothell. You can see what the land use designations are around it, is primarily single-family. To the south, of course, is a water tank and a couple of schools. There's also some provisions. No Shore Utility District has a small piece of property right here that they've reserved for some use of another, I'm not sure what it is. And what the applicant is asking for is that, right now, when we annex them from the city, from King County, we assign an R-5400D designation, because the previous King County designation was R-8. That seemed to be the closest provision we could have. However, the proponents have identified that, you know, they did some analysis underneath some of the previous King County zoning, and they applied the current City of Bothell zoning, and they found that they were seeing quite a deficit in the number of lots that they could have previously had. In fact, apparently that it was quite substantial. So what they've asked for is, they've asked for an R-4000 designation to get them to the equivalent density that they believe they could have had underneath the previous King County provision. Now, staff, again, took a pretty good look at this one, and we're recommending, instead of the R-5400D, go to an R-5400A. Now, the difference between D and A is attached or detached. D is detached. That requires mandated a certain lot size, a certain lot dimension, all individual, single-family. 5400A is an attached designation, has a lot more flexibility. It gives you the ability to have different lot sizes, different lot dimensions, and things like that. Historically, the city has seen a lot of detached condominiums built within the R-5400A designation. In fact, it's been hugely successful from that standpoint. We've had, you know, over 400 of those type of facilities constructed within, within eight or nine developments within the city. So it's been a very successful provision. We believe that the 5400A gives the applicant the kind of flexibility they need to get closer to what they may have had with King County, and so we don't have a capacity issue. But it doesn't potentially insert what could maybe be an incompatible zoning designation into this predominantly single-family area. The R-4000 designation is essentially a multifamily residential designation within the City of Bothell. It allows a little taller building, it allows a little bit more area, it allows a little more units. We don't believe that is compatible with this area. That's why we believe that going from the R-5100D to the R-500A gives them the flexibility, but keeps the number of houses about the same. So that's basically the staff's recommendation there. Now, I'm going to break right here and ask if there's any questions on those, because we covered some stuff really quickly there. Or I can just turn it over to Dave right now, if you'd prefer.
I think what I'd like to do at this point is, Dave, kind of stay on hold here. And let's just stay with Bruce and these two subareas. So otherwise, we get four going, and we kind of get a lot, there's a lot out there anyway. So I am going to ask the commissioners if you have any kind of initial questions, so be thinking of some questions, but I'll start off. You've talked about three zoning requests for these two subareas.
Yes.
Let's just elevate a bit and go into, since we are really talking about our strategic plan for the subareas, give us a little bit of guidance as to both the Brickyard Road and the West Hill subarea plans, and kind of where they've been strategically and where they're going. And the reason I'm doing that is I'd like to provide a little context around these zoning change requests.
Absolutely. Now, I'm going to start with the West Hill. As I identified, the West Hill has always been looked at as a primarily single-family area. And that's basically how the city's comprehensive plan views this area. And if you look at this map, which is probably the best one, you can see R-7200, R-9600, R-8400, R-7200. This is a single-family area. And that makes the most sense to keep that as a single-family area. West Hill's also got the, is located where the old Magnolia Dairy Farm, that's kind of the traditional name for it, that's basically been the development rights that were purchased by King County. So this area is pretty well established as a single-family. That one's not too hard. The one that's a little trickier is the Brickyard Road-Queensgate subarea, because it has a real mix of different uses.
Right.
And it has a couple of other things involved, namely, basically interstate freeway, interstate interchange in this location right here, as well as a real mix of pretty intense uses that kind of go into some single-family. So this is a little more involved, or a little more interesting from a planning perspective. And essentially, what happens here is that the, ooh, I lost my, there it is, 160th, which is a major east-west connection to the Interstate 405, is connected also to 124th, which is a real significant north-south collector. So these things are kind of parallel there. And this corner, you know, these little two and a half acres here of the Spatation, anyway, that's probably why King County gave them an R-8, because it is such a really interesting area. Now, north of there, for the Hallett, this is an area that's also really interesting, because a little bit further away from this area, you have a lot of what we call an OPLI, which is light industrial warehousing. And further to the east, towards the City of Woodenville, you have a lot of warehouses, some light manufacturing, and all those kind of things. This is almost a transition area from a lot of standpoints, from the predominantly industrial kind of look to the north, down to a residential, single-family, and then down to more multifamily or large kind of provisions. Because some of these facilities in here are very, very dense multifamily designations. So the Hallett provision is also interesting, because, you know, again, predominantly in the old days, this was all old, single-family residential areas, you know, from many years ago. However, in this, oops, in this location, we have this mix here that I heard, and it made a lot of sense back in the early 90s, when this was area was kind of basically zoned to this area, to these designations, to include a general commercial zone. It matched kind of primarily the existing business, which is, at that time, was Chaussee Cedar Siding, now it's called Wine Valley Siding, as well as kind of made a lot of sense for the uses that are across the river. So this area is a lot more involved as far as what's out there. So, well, I'll end it at that.
Yeah, no, that's very helpful. And that was kind of my, the point behind my question, and that is that we, as we do think about any kind of zoning request change, we want to keep it in the context of not only historically what that particular area has been, but what also aspirationally, and from a vision standpoint, where we may want to be heading it in the future. So thanks very much. And yeah, I recognize that particularly in the Brickyard Road-Queensgate subarea, there is some significant areas that we might want to be looking at some changes, so. Yep, okay. Are there any questions from the Planning Commissioners? Commissioner Clark?
Are we going to look at each one at a time, or do you want me to ask all the questions I have about?
I just want us to stay on these two subareas. So I don't want to go to either of the two, but yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to talk about the Spatation proposal first. First of all, question, you mentioned in your staff recommendation that the R-4000 designation is much more likely to be developed as attached dwelling units than, I think, the R-5400A?
Yes.
Why is that? And how, is that by?
And that's basically historic trends, what we've seen in other locations within the city that have those type of zoning designations. Within the R-4000, it's much more common to get a true attached multifamily, you know, multiple units within this individual, one single building, than it is within the R-5400A. In fact, the R-5400A has been almost exclusively detached condominium-style development.
Okay. So the main difference between a R-5400A and an R-5400D is it, I noticed in the letter, the application, they suggested that the dimensional requirements were one of the things that were hurting their density after they came over from King County. Does the R-5400A allow a relaxation of those standards that the D does not?
It does. In fact, one of the things about the R-5400A, because it is technically an attached, or kind of like a multifamily zone, even though it's this funny transition zone. And essentially, what it does is it gives you the ability to have a lot more flexibility in how you lay out your lots. And it's one of the reasons why the R-5400A has been so popular with the detached condominium, because most of those establish a unit area. It's not really a lot, it's a unit area. And it's usually around anywhere from 3,000 to 4,000 square feet, sometimes lower, sometimes higher. But that gives them the ability to do those tile, that style of development, that designation, sorry.
Okay. And then the last thing on that particular application, I would love to hear from what the owner's perspective is on your recommendation versus the one that they made, so maybe.
Yeah, we'll definitely have that.
Yeah, I just wanted to just point that out. Just a couple other quick questions. On the Hughes proposal, you mentioned that you had approached another landowner about possibly doing a redesignation of their property. Is that something that is a regular thing? I mean, when there's another similar property in a similar circumstance, is that typical for staff to approach other property owners?
Well, in this case, it was because the Planning Commission identified, when Mr. Hughes came to you at the initial hearing, the Planning Commission was looking at, we put up the zoning map on this, and they said, well, look, there's also a 9600 over in this area, too. I mean, does it make sense to do the same thing to this property owner that we're doing here, which is surrounding them with a different zoning designation? And that's basically why we approached them. And that was basically, this is kind of more of a unique situation than the normal.
Okay. The reason I ask is that one of the recommendations that the commission made, I think, a month or two ago, was to ask staff to look more into considering redesignation of these areas that are kind of islanded, based on either an annexation from the county or something like.
And that was, yeah, that was the second part of it, you bet.
Then just one question on Hallett. If they remain as the GC designation, I'm assuming that doesn't affect their ability, if they wanted to submit and obtain a new single-family residential building permit, they could still do that on those, on any one of those three parcels?
They should be able to, yes. One of the things that's really tricky here, when we have a non-conforming use, basically the general commercial zone says you should have a general commercial-type use. If you have a single-family use applied, it's always hard to fit, because there's dimensional, different dimensional standards. But they probably could have a detached, single-family residence. I think it actually requires a special, a conditional use permit that they go through to achieve that. However, there are two existing houses on the property, and those can stay forever.
So it's questionable as to whether they could get a building permit? Is that what I'm hearing?
For the.
It's not certain?
The property in the middle is, I'd have to look at the regulation, I can't remember off the top of my head. Usually, we allow a single-family in every, all the jurisdiction areas, but I'd have to look that up. I didn't look at that one.
Maybe, could you answer that question for us?
I'll try and find a place where I can find the code.
Well, not right now, but I mean.
Oh, yeah, easily.
It's a future meeting or something. And then I guess the other thing on that particular piece, has there been any look from a dimensional or a topographic standpoint as to whether that site even lends itself to the GC designation? Could it even be developed as that?
Well, what would happen is, to develop it as a GC, you'd have to do a pretty extensive grading operation there. The topography varies from about 17% on average up to about 25%, 26% on average, depending on which price the property are. So certainly, it would require a lot of work, land area, to make that, kind of like that flat, you know, easy transition from Woodenville Drive that most commercial-type uses prefer. That's basically what happened with Wine Valley Siding many years ago. What they did is they did that type of an operation.
I see. Thank you, Commissioner Bruce.
Yep. Any other questions? Mr. Stedman.
On the Hallett property, the GC designation, would that allow a mixed-use development?
If it was commercial in nature, certainly, you know, offices and those kind of things.
Office retail.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes. Yeah, any type of retail activity, yes.
Okay. From my understanding in the package here, that's really not the intent. The intent is to, is to not be hit with the increased tax liability, but, and while I'm sympathetic, we really have to take a look at what's, you know, what's the highest and best use for the properties.
Mr. Lee.
Yes, with regards to the Hallett property, and I don't know if this was covered already, if I missed it, but can you point on the map where the two current structures exist? I think I know one of the brick ones. It's a really nice old home.
Oh, it's hard, this is not, but this is one structure, and this is the other structure.
Okay.
The vacant parcel, if you will, there's a little structure on it, is the one in the middle.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that, thanks.
Commissioner Cape.
I have a general question over both, both subareas. So you mentioned a lot of factors you guys look into when making your determination. What about infrastructure and environmental concerns when you're looking at upzoning? I know that these aren't large changes that we're looking at tonight as far as lots, but in general, how do you guys look at that?
Well, one of the things that we would naturally do is, if there's an area that is really underserved by infrastructure, we'll say roads or utilities, like primarily sanitary sewer, sometimes we will recommend keeping a lower residential density, just simply from the standpoint that if you don't have readily sewer, sewer is readily available, you're going to have to be going with a, you know, septic system, on-site system, or something like that. That doesn't happen in very many locations in the city. There's about two or three that are very notable. For the most part, most areas can be served, depend upon how much money you want to spend, of course, with sanitary sewer.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. And environmentally wise, one of the things that we have, of course, we have the Curricula Regulations, and those are kind of the umbrella regulations that apply to all lands. And it basically looks at those different factors. And one of them could be wetlands, streams, wildlife habitat, steep slopes, geologically, potentially geologically hazardous areas. Those are the thing, that is the mechanism the city uses to look at the environmental provisions. Sorry, I forgot that part of your question.
Thanks.
So I had one further question with regards to the Spatation-Nelson-O'Day request, and that is, and it might have been answered in Commissioner Clark's, but I didn't get it clarified. So the difference, we're looking at 5400D, which is currently what it is, the request is R-4000, and staff is recommending R-5400A. In our notes, you noted the capacity analysis for 5400D is 15, and 4000 would be 21 units. What if, what would the 5400A?
It would still be 15.
It would still be 15?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Now, within that, the mathematics shows 15. However, there's another thing that I didn't really touch too much upon, and that is the fact that these folks have a major electrical transmission line along the eastern portion of their property that takes up 45, 50 feet, or something like this. They probably would not be able to put a house, or a dwelling unit, or any substantial structure underneath that area. That's one of the things that really, I believe, hurts them when they're laying out houses, because suddenly that 50 feet is no longer be able to, you can't basically put a lot in there. So that's one of the factors that they have to, as well. And basically, what I'm saying is that the mathematics may show 15, it may be much less in actual fact when you lay those things out. One of the things about the R-5400A that is a significant change is that that doesn't necessarily have to be the case, because you have that flexibility in the lot size and the dimensions. You can make the lots smaller, have the same relative number, but make lots smaller and fit them in there. So it's not so much density as maybe yield. They may get, you know, a few more lots with the R-5400A, just because of the unique configuration of their piece of property.
Understood, thank you. So I think at this point in our agenda, given that this entire part of our agenda is a public hearing, and as folks that are here can tell, we're very much in data gathering mode, questioning mode, rather than go forward with Mr. Boyd's part of the presentation, I think what I'd like to do is give the invitation for anyone in the room to, that would have any public comment on these two particular subareas, this is your opportunity to do that. And so Bruce, let's allow that to happen.
Absolutely, I think that's a good idea.
Yep. So first of all, I very much appreciate all of you that have come this evening. As you can tell, we're looking at these requests closely, and very much trying to get as much information as we can. So if there are any of you that have any comment with regards to these particular two subareas or the requests, this is the time to come forward. What I'd ask you to do is What I'd ask you to do is provide us with your name, your address for the record, and then if you could limit your comments to five minutes, and I will, probably at about four and a half, if we go longer, I'll start to give you the warning. But this is your opportunity to do that. Yes, ma'am? Yeah, please come forward to the podium.
I'll try to speak quickly.
Sure.
My name is Colleen Hallett. I reside at 11807 Woodinville Drive in Bothell. My husband, John, and I have been Bothell residents for 42 years. We are here tonight to request that our property on Woodinville Drive be rezoned as residential property. Our property was zoned residential from 1978 until approximately 1992, when there was evidently a citywide rezoning plan enacted, and the zoning was changed to commercial. We were never informed that a zoning change had been made. This only came to our attention because our property values have tripled since 2011, and our property taxes have gone up from $5,000 to over $15,000 per year. They will be increasing again next year based on the 2014-15 property value notice we recently received. We are being taxed out of our home. When we looked into why this was happening, we discovered the zoning change. When we purchased our property in 1972, it was zoned as a commercial piece of property. We approached the Bothell Planning Commission in 1978 to have it rezoned as residential. The arguments made for the rezoning and the conclusions reached by the Planning Commission and Bothell City Council in 1978 granting our rezoning have not changed in the ensuing years. The arguments were, in obtaining residential zoning, it would assure the citizens in the greater Bothell-Woodinville area of the retaining of one of Bothell's historical old homes, which is listed in the Bothell Museum and mentioned in the article about Bothell's history located on the City of Bothell's website. The home was constructed sometime in the late 1880s, 1800s, excuse me. Secondly, the property involved is extremely hilly, and to be used commercially would need to be excavated. To level this property for commercial use would leave a retaining wall 60 to 80 feet high. This would cause severe problems in erosion and changing of surface runoff because of the large amount of water in the hill. Woodcrest planners and the City of Bothell ran into major difficulties in engineering because of their excavations. This is a designated hazardous slope area. I do have a copy of the City of Bothell's landslide prone deposits map, and it shows our property on it. And thirdly, the commercial zoning of the property is an isolated zoning as it stands now with residential, excuse me, as it stands with residential zoning surrounding it. The conclusions of the 1978 Planning Commission were the staff found no reason why the property owner's desire to have residential zoning should not prevail. The area was originally zoned commercial in anticipation of the SR-522 bypass, which has now been officially terminated. Secondly, the property owner's desires should prevail where there is no reasonable basis for the established city policies for this piece of property. The comprehensive plan is not precise in this area, and the property is equally split between commercial and residential development. And thirdly, the area is an environmentally sensitive area with poor soil conditions and six lots of groundwater. The less amount of disturbance of this hazardous slope area, the better opportunity for general stability in the area. In, on November 6th in 1978, the Bothell City Council passed the ordinance number 908, and I won't read it all to you, but it basically granted us our residential classification. I have a copies of those with me as well, if you need them. At the beginning of my comments, I mentioned that the arguments made for that rezoning and the conclusions reached by the Planning Commission and Bothell Council in 1978 granting the rezoning have not changed in the ensuing years. The only changes to East Riverside Drive have occurred in the first three-tenths of a mile from 102nd Street. The balance of East Riverside Drive to Woodinville Drive was, is, and remains a residential neighborhood and residential street with a speed limit of 25 miles per hour. Woodinville Drive also continues to be mainly residential as well. And I know that we've shown some general commercial, but there's an awful lot of residential properties on it. It has been suggested that rezoning our property back to residential would be spot zoning. I suggest that the GC zoning is more spot zoning than is the residential. I have a current zoning map that has the GC designation colored blue. As you can see, it is surrounded by mostly residential, which is colored orange. So this tiny piece is GC, the rest of that is all residential. The home and property have been residential since the beginning of the previous century, long before the existence of any of the commercial entities which have caused the residential zoning to be changed. I would suggest that land use policy, LUP4, was not used when GC zoning was granted to the lumberyard. It was also not used when the City of Bothell decided to construct their maintenance yard on the abandoned old Brickyard Road. That entire area was residential, and the spot zoning was GC. This is not a situation where there is an established commercial area that we are trying to build a residence in the middle of it. This is an undoing of a zoning plan that should not have taken place. I understand the City of Bothell is interested in promoting land use that create tax dollars for the city. However, zoning changes also need to be based on reality. This property has always been residential, and will continue to be so for the foreseeable future. I found the comments of the previous Planning Commission of 1978 to be particularly commended. They said, and I quote, "The property owner's desires should prevail where there is no reasonable basis for the established city policies for this property. We have lived on Woodinville Drive for 42 years. We intend to continue to live there for at least another couple of decades. Our property has never been, nor will it be in the foreseeable future, a commercial property that would be employing employees and generating income. We humbly request that you emulate your predecessors and grant our request for residential zoning. Thank you."
Thank you very much. Before you step down, are there any questions of Ms. Hallett?
That was extremely, extremely well presented, thank you for that. Can we have copies of that?
Oh, absolutely.
Is that in our packet?
It's not, I don't think.
I'm not sure what it is that she's providing, so...
Okay, all right.
If you would, that'd be great, that'd be appreciated.
Yeah, I can give you that, and I can give you copies of the previous Planning Commission's comments and...
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Commissioner Cabe.
Could we put the zoning map that you have on the overhead, just to take a look at it?
Yeah.
Just put it right there on that, to the left.
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
I can give you a copy of that, too.
So, just to make sure, we have a map in front of us as well as that one. So, the blue is currently both your property as well as the...
City of Bothell and the lumberyard.
As well as the lumberyard. Okay, understood. Okay, thank you. So there were some items in your statement that were new information for me. I do want us to analyze it, and as such, we're not ready to make a vote on this this evening. So we want to, we want to research this further. We do very much appreciate you coming forward, and I think there were some particular, for me, one of the items that I, that was in your statement was around this potential retaining wall, and any type of erosion impacts that would be done by this. That was new to me, so I don't feel like I'm ready to make a vote on this this evening. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm John Hallett, and I'm on the other side of the family, of course. Just real quick, this is what people call the old Brickyard House. I don't know if you people drive that road or not. It's built around 1880s, and it's three stories on clay, and it's a huge, old, beautiful brick building. And if we have to go to commercial, it would come down, I'm sorry to say.
It's not designated as any type of historic place, a landmark?
No, we opted out because of, I haven't changed any outside facade whatsoever. No, we opted out, we were concerned if we did, we might lose our ability to do something good in the future.
Okay. Just as an, and I don't know if you know this information, you mentioned that your taxes have gone up, I think you said, threefold.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any type of information, this would be another thing I'd like to learn, if it were to go to R-9600, what the impact on your taxes would be? Or, if not, again, we can find that out.
We can furnish it.
Mr. Black...
Okay. That's all I wanted to say. I wanted to guys let you know where the house was, that it's on the river down there. It's a big, beautiful, old building.
All right, thank you. Are there any other public, yes, sir?
My name is Tony Perakini. My home address is 4724 200th Street Southeast in Bothell. I'm the landowner of the property marked as Wine Valley Siding Supply, and have concerns with the change of zoning. We operate a business there, and have the need to make noise, to operate in the evening, to operate in the weekends if need be, depending on our workload, and I don't think we would be good neighbors for single-family residents over there, nor do I think the property would really be a desirable lot for builders with the zoning that's around it, the freeway that's extremely close. And I propose that it be left in a general commercial use. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Any, before you step down, any questions of Tony? Nope? Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, sir?
I'd like to comment, though.
Please, yeah, come forward to the podium.
My name is Ken Straub. Live at 16106 122nd Place Northeast in Bothell. And I was wondering if the gentleman here could put up the Spatessian Nielsen and O'Day map of the lots around it, please? Thank you.
Absolutely.
The problem my wife and I have, we are the house immediately downhill from where this new zoning will take place. You can come view our property in the wintertime, and we have had to construct 18-inch wide ditches to currently take the water that comes off that property and get it out to the street. So my house is, oh, that's fine, just to see where it was. A couple of years ago, we gave an easement to the Soar and Water District to bring sewer down through our lot. We have no problem with that. But, an acre of land is 4,000, 43,560 square feet. If you get an inch of rain an hour, which we all can agree, it does rain that heavily here in our area. That generates, on two and a half acres, 9,075 cubic feet. At 7.45 gallons per cubic feet, foot, that's 67,600 gallons an hour of water, which has to come down to my property.
Because we're right below where this development is.
That's 1,127 gallons per minute, guys. So if you're going to approve any changes to that zoning, and they put anything on that property, we have to mitigate this water, because literally, you can raft down my backyard. And I welcome you to come look anytime, just push the gate open and you'll see the trenches. We haven't widened them out yet for this year, but they're still there from last year. So, we're talking about 1,000, when you put roofs down, concrete down and everything, that water all has to go somewhere. Some of it goes in the ground now. But with houses, all that water has to come squirting down my property. And that's going to flood us out.
We had a tree that actually, there's like literally rivers that come down, because we have a terrace backyard. It's like rivers that come down into our backyard. And we had a tree that literally got so much of that water coming down, it literally rotted out. And I took some, I have some pictures on my cellphone, I can show you if you want later, or I can email them to you. It literally rotted out the base of that tree, and we had a tree probably about an 80-foot tree, literally come down in our yard because of this water right now. And so that's our big concern, is...
And about nine, 10 years ago, I did have the surface water management people out to my backyard, because I was constructing a trench, which is three feet deep, oh, two feet wide, filled with a perf pipe on the bottom, and river rock on top, to catch some of this water and re-divert it. And it did help our property somewhat, but not enough when it's raining hard. I mean, our basement flipped. I mean, there's just so much water that you can't keep it away.
It flooded numerous times, even with the French drains and everything, so that's one of our big, big concerns. Every time it rains hard, like a couple weeks ago when it was raining so hard, we have to maintain our gutters, make sure there's absolutely nothing in them, because that, just that little bit of water that would come from our property, literally would, it floods out. We flooded so many times, it's...
We have waterfalls coming out of our rock reefs, so that's what we have to say.
So, yeah, thank you very much. One question I have, and there may be others. So, the current zoning designation for this piece of property is R-5400D. Your concern is that if it were to switch to R-4000, there'd be a greater level of both roof runoff as well as street runoff, which would result in a higher and a faster runoff towards your property. Am I correct?
Yeah, whatever they do there, you know, I'm going to do whatever I have to to make sure the water is mitigated before it comes down to our property. You know, we're talking 1,000 gallons a minute when it's raining hard, that has to be dealt with. And coming down to my property, I, you can, we can swim down my backyard, we'll put up a fence.
Yeah, because we're right where you got the purple zoning for the R-54.
Yeah.
I mean, so we're the ones that get hit the most of everybody.
Understood.
Sorry, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. Any questions?
Anything else, sir?
Just the concern of the water runoff and everything, even with our French drains, it comes so fast, it doesn't even hit the French drains.
Okay. Commissioner Clark?
Would you mind just pointing out one more time where your home is?
You have to understand that, let me, yeah, my wife can point it out. The, you have to understand that the property that they want to develop is about 25 feet above where our house is, because this whole road, as you know, when you go down 124th and down 160th, it's a slope, right? So, I understand that I have to accept the water that nature brings me, but I don't want to accept water that is put there around nature, if you follow me.
We're the 16106, if you look on the map, we're the one that backs right up against this Spatessian.
And again, I've had the surface water management guy out there, and he suggested the path that I took for now to get rid of some of it, but it certainly didn't get rid of all of it, and it's certainly not going to get rid of 1,000 gallons a minute.
It flowed over a foot deep of water. You can imagine, I mean, you have a fence, and you've got the bottom, two-by-four that goes across the bottom. It literally has flowed so fast that it's gone up above that two-by-four, you know, literally over a foot up is how fast the waters come.
Great.
Anyway, thank you, thank you.
Any other members of the public on either of these two subareas? Yes, ma'am?
I have some questions on the same topic.
Good, please come forward. And if you could give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Lynn Ritalik.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Lynn Ritalik, 12215 Northeast 162nd Street. So you mentioned historically that the R-5400A zoning has resulted in primarily detached buildings, but the zoning would allow attached buildings in that area, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Theoretically, yes.
And there's no restriction? There's no additional zoning or restriction that would go on top of that? If they get that zoning, then it's completely up to the developer, right?
Would you like me to respond?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Essentially what it is, well, certainly, the uses that are established within that zone would be allowed. It's not wide open, and of course, there's, you know, setbacks and a whole series of regulations that have to be applied there, certainly.
Do you understand that, Ms. Ritalik? I mean, there'd be a whole series of code requirements that the developer would have to meet, so it's not like just the capacity...
But it could be attached or detached.
That's correct, yes.
There wouldn't be additional code requirements that would require it to be detached, because this zoning is allowing it, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then, the, this property here is probably the most recent development in the area, R-5400A.
Yes.
So that's a similar density to what's there, although it could be attached, is that right?
Now, understand, that was developed underneath King County's standards.
Okay.
Those are not, those are not City of Bothell's standards in that particular subdivision.
So would it be approximately that density, or what?
Yeah, I can tell, I mean, I might jump in here, Bruce, too, but the density capacities from a county and a city are significantly different. And so I think it would, you'd actually be getting an incorrect impression if you look at that, just because it's zoned R-5400A, that that's necessarily what you're going to get.
Is there something else in this area that's comparable? I mean, you say you look at the surrounding properties. So I see R-72 or 9600. The R-6 on the King County side or Woodinville side is probably, is that means 6,000? Is that what that means?
That actually means, that's the equivalent to the City of Bothell, 7200.
Okay, so 7200, 9600. Is there anything else in these adjacent surrounding properties that are similar to what's being proposed here? Or what's being recommended? Because you did mention that you look at the surrounding properties.
Yes, yes. The R-5400A designation under the City of Bothell's regulations, there's nothing really close to this site. We've got a bunch of them I can point you to, but nothing in, within this...
Nothing in this neighborhood area?
Correct, yes, correct, yes.
Okay. But, is part of the, part of the planning commission's goals to maintain the character of the properties, or the character of the neighborhoods, I should say, is that part of why you look at the surrounding properties?
Definitely.
Are there any height restrictions? I noticed that some, down the hill, there's more new construction. When they reduce the size of the lot, or you're talking about these condos, I think, I can't remember the word you used, but anyway, we'll use lot size. When they reduce that, they ended up building the buildings very tall, which I think would impact the other houses in this area, and would be, again, out of character with what's here.
Can you address height restrictions?
Yes, absolutely. The height restriction of the R-5400A is 30 feet, just like it is in the R-7200 designation. They're the same.
So, there's no change? That's the same as what the current zoning would, it wouldn't change that at all?
That's correct.
Could they apply for variance?
No.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry. Yes, they could, but it'd be very unlikely, it'd be very unlikely that would be approved. Yeah, it, you know, there's a difference between applying and getting approved for that.
Okay. And you mentioned also that there was a lot of unusable, possibly, well, probably unusable property, like the utility right-of-way. Would the R-5400A zoning allow, if they can't use that space, say along 124th, would it allow them to configure the space for the buildings in the rest of the lot in a tighter configuration, or something to try to make up for that? I guess I don't know how you calculate that. So, when you're guessing that the maximum capacity could be 15 buildings, if part of that's unusable, would that mean less buildings, or could they use the other pieces of the property in a tighter configuration? So, there would be, you know, more buildings on the other parts, say above this Straub's property?
Just interrupt. I want to make sure, is your microphone on?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We just want to make sure that this is getting recorded for the record. So, go ahead, ma'am.
Yeah. So, my question was, if there's unusable pieces of this property, like the utility right-of-way, can they make up for that by making other parts of the overall plat denser with more buildings?
Oh.
I just touched people that were coming over.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Did you want me to ask one more time?
If you wouldn't mind.
Sure. Just one more.
Okay. Sorry. Okay. So, the question was, if there's pieces of the property, they're unusable, like the utility right-of-way, does this zoning allow a configuration of buildings in the rest of the property, the rest of the plat, that would be denser to try to make up for that?
Christian Gaslin.
Bruce, under, under King County zoning, what was this property?
R-8.
R-8. And under King County zoning, you're allowed to lot cluster?
Oh, yes.
So, the, so, if we're trying to match King County, our only, I think I'm trying, I'm trying to answer her question here, is by going with an R-8, I mean, R-5400A, that allows more type of the R-8 in King County, correct?
It's probably...
Because if you're, if you're 5400D, you're going to have to have 5400D lot sizes, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, so, yes, your question is, yes, if we go to the 5400A, but that's matching what they had before, because in, in King County, the zoning's a lot more liberal than in Bothell. We have minimum lot sizes.
One of the reasons we appreciated annexing to Bothell.
Anyway, so, so, your question, there is nothing up here that matches it, but it is less than, even if they got the 5400A, would be a lot less than under the King County R-8. Possibly.
So, what is R-8? Is that eight per acre? Or what is...
Eight units per acre, and that's, and you get to use the full size of your properties. You don't have to discount it for wetlands, or roads, or storms retention areas. So, it's a completely different zoning. The two are not the same.
Still roughly large, well, you said it's still roughly the same.
Yeah. And essentially, what it is, is it's the closest the City of Bothell has to an R-8, it's the 5400A.
Okay.
And trying to compare the two jurisdictional changes is very, very complex.
Right.
We're nearing our five minutes, so...
Yeah, that's fine. I think that's, I think that's most of my questions.
All right.
And, oh, my last question, sorry. What is the public comment period? I mean, this was posted fairly recently, and there wasn't anything on your website. So, is there an extended comment period? Or were you considering a vote?
This here, this, this one stays open until we have the cleanup, so you might explain that. Why don't you explain this whole thing, though?
Thank you.
Yeah, this is, this is not going to be closed this evening. This is an ongoing public hearing, so definitely at least 60 to 90 days, right?
Yeah. Oh, yes. This will be, this will go into next year, actually.
Right. So, there's no urgency to close the public comment period. Certainly not, won't be closed this evening. Thank you very much. Yes, sir?
I'd like to, on the same line.
Yeah. Please. And just, just for the record, state your name and address, and then continue to speak into the mic, if you would.
Jeff Pappy, 12305, Northeast 162nd Street. I live next door to Lynn. I wanted to first off ask, Mr. Blackburn mentioned that this R-5400 zoning type had been used successfully throughout the city. How do you define success?
Well, basically, it has been a very popular zone within which to develop. We've got a lot of development within that area. And it's been a pretty success from the standpoint that it is providing a product that seems to be having a very large market interest. They sell out very quickly.
Would, do you have any feedback that gives you any idea of the success for the neighboring properties and neighborhoods? Would you say that the areas that surround these, these zones are, that they feel that that's a successful use of that land?
Well, considering that the R-8, 5400A does allow attached unit, I believe that most folks that live around it, I can't give you empirical evidence, but I believe that most of the folks say, yeah, that is a reasonable way to go, because it has the same look as a detached, single-family residential neighborhood.
Okay. That's, oh, and can you clarify? The diagram here indicates that the whole section along 160th there is part of that lot, but on the other side of the flyer that was, that was mailed, it's just a rectangular portion.
Yeah, and I'm sorry. What this is showing, this is showing the zoning designation, it's not the properties. Basically, that little kind of east-west long site is actually a North Shore Utility District-owned property. It's not part of the, the property owner's area, but it would be included in the rezone.
And I'd just like to echo Lynn's comment that the information was pretty difficult to find on the website. In fact, I never did find it. And also, the flyer that was posted on the, on the notification board on 160th was empty every time I walked past. So, it would be nice if it were more, more accessible on your webpage.
Yeah, thanks very much. Yeah, let's, let's make sure that our materials, I know it's, it's hard to keep them stocked, you know, physically, but we definitely can have something very clearly posted on our website. So, let's make sure we do that. Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Mark Retallick, and I live at 12215, Northeast 162nd Street. I'd like to point out to the commission that the property that is right behind us has been for sale on and off over the 15 years I've lived in my home. Bothell didn't wake up yet the first February and decide to annex property, you know, into the city. That was a two-year process, and we couldn't wait for it. And the people that bought the property, that want to do this, want to change it, they knew what they were buying, they knew what the zoning was. It's single-family, all around there. There's, you know, there's a junior high and an elementary school right across the street. And, you know, if, if they could have bought it, they should have bought it when King County had it and given more things. What, what we wanted to do to come into the City of Bothell was, we heard great things. We were on an island on our own. There was, I think, 47 homes up here that were in King County, surrounded by cities. We didn't get any services from Bothell. You know, they worked it out with the county to take us over. It was like, right on, we finally get something, you know, for our, for our money and our taxes and everything. And then, the first thing we get is, you know, hey, let's reduce it. It's single-family, it's 5400D, you know, if they can, it's not a big piece of property. It is not a big piece of property. You know, if you can get 15 homes in it, or whatever, under current, I don't think it should be changed from, from what you have. You know, that, that's what it is. That's what matched closest to what you had, and they can either make a go of it, or they can't. You know, that's just the way it is. There's nothing to keep them from purchasing other properties and, you know, maybe taking care of a water problem or two, you know, and doing it all together. That's business. But, they knew what they were buying when they bought it. If they didn't do their due diligence, I don't see it's the city's or mine obligation to help them out for development. We've always known that someday, something's going to be built up there and behind us, and I probably have the smallest backyard, probably 30 feet to the fence, you know, and I could be looking at a home, you know, I don't know what the setback would be. I think Bruce told me 15 feet, but if it goes up 35 feet, I have someone looking down in my backyard, potentially. You know, it's not, say, landscaping or something could mitigate that to a certain degree. And I understand everybody needs a place to live, but they knew what they were buying, is all I want to point out. Two of the properties were bought this year, when it, when it was annexed in the City of Bothell. They bought in the City of Bothell.
Great.
Okay?
Mr. Retallick, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
I'll give it to...
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you. Mr. Gaslin.
That's an exhibit?
Yeah.
So, you want to give it to...
I'll get it.
Exhibit number...
I'll have to assign some exhibit numbers to them. I'm not sure exactly what it is.
Are there anybody else, again, on these two subareas in the requested zoning change? One of you. I heard, I saw her hand first, if you want to come forward. I'm sorry, you need to come up if you're going to speak. Just keep it brief. We have others.
20 seconds. So, this is Iceland Straub property, and like we said, we're right behind. It's a really hilly area. If it was flat, it wouldn't be as big of a concern as far as the water runoff. But I just wanted to know, do I need to now give you like an email address or something? Because I would like to send some photos just to give you an idea of what's going on even before they develop this area? Could I...
Actually, Mr., yeah, Blackburn.
Actually, what I would like to do is, I got a bunch of business cards, and I want people who commented to come and get my business card and send me an email, please.
There you go.
Okay. And again, the zoning, if you look at the same area, it's like 12 houses in that same area. Thank you.
Understood. Yes, sir?
My name is Steve Nielsen. My address is 16025, 124th Avenue Northeast in Woodinville, although it's the Woodinville Post Office. We're part of your annexation. I've heard a lot of comments that didn't come up in the last, last meeting, a couple of which I'd like to address. We live at the, I'd say, at the top of the hill, above these folks that live down on 122nd. And clearly, there is a water problem at the top, even at the top of the hill with nothing draining onto my property. And there is a high-water table there. And it's, it's, for us, it's seasonal. Usually, my sump pumps in the basement come on in mid to late January. Clearly, anything else that would be done to the property through development, irrespective of what the zone is, if there's 35% land coverage by structure, if there's 8% to 12% by, coverage by other impervious surfaces, I don't have development experience in the City of Bothell, but every drop of that is going to end up in some sort of a contained, controlled system, which I would expect, just that alone would be an improvement for the folks living downhill, plus other measures that can be, that can take care of the groundwater issue that, I have no idea where it comes from. It's rising up from underneath us. It's not falling down upon us. At least that's up at the top of the hill, that's the situation. Also, one other thing I'd like to correct is that Jeff O'Day bought the Sutherland parcel about 20 years ago, bought it from Jim McAllister, Senator McAllister, my longtime neighbors. Phoebe Spatation bought one piece of property about 10 or 12 years ago. That's where Lou Rowley lived, and Mr. Pope lived when he first moved in there. And then, she bought Steve Miller's property, which lies in behind mine. And that's, that's the only parcel in there that's undeveloped. My wife and I have lived there for 36 years, and so, we just didn't happen on something that we expected. Maybe you guys would be nice enough to do something on annexation. R-8 was a reality for us for years in the city, at King County. That was the anticipation, it was the expectation, that that zone would be a reasonable transition zone between the arterial traffic volumes and the impacts it has, that that has on our properties and the enjoyment of our properties. And the other part is, we are not part of a larger subdivision like Totem Estates, or the Cross Street, or the 160 lots that D.R. Horton is building down the street. We have limited access, we're a small collection of properties, and we receive impacts that our neighbors do not. And the R-4000 zone is, is an appropriate, reasonable, as your code is written, an appropriate and reasonable transition zoning that lessens the impacts on our properties and does not adversely impact the neighboring properties. It's a, it's a common land use entitlement policy, I think, that could be applied in this case. The King County R-8 zone has a net development density of 10 units per net acre. That was the anticipation for decades as we lived on these properties. We expected that on annexation, that that would be acknowledged. In fact, in some of the pre-annexation conversations, that was, that was generally the policy statement that we heard from City of Bothell, that that would be the case. The R-5400D zone doesn't come close to R-8. The 5400A, excuse, yeah, to R-8, the 5400A has the attached, which isn't really what we're interested in, has the attached feature, but it's, the R-4000, the more closely aligns with the King County R-8 zone. There's, there is a subdivision in our neighborhood, a new one, under construction, some homes built, called Trellis Park. It's on Brickyard Road, and that's an R-4000 development. Single-family, detached houses in a planned configuration with common recreation space. I don't know if it's private roads or public roads, but there, it's paved to the city's standards, has sidewalks, has a play area. That's an R-4000 zone, I think, which is very appropriate for this location. We, there was some document that I read from the city, maybe it was the announcement of the, of this meeting, saying that these parcels, these subject parcels are surrounded by single-family development. Not the case. We have it on two sides. On the other two sides, we have arterial roads, significant impact, and transition uses are appropriate in this location.
We're at, right at five minutes, so, please, if you could wrap up.
Let me just, one quick look. Those are my comments. I don't need to say anymore now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the public, again, on these two subareas? So, again, I would like to thank everyone who came forward to speak, and also, as well as everyone who's here this evening. My thinking on this, but I'd be, I'd be interested in kind of the comments from the, from the podium here, is I think we're ready to vote on the Hughes recommendation in West Hill. I think that'd be something that we're pretty, we're close to being able to make a recommendation on. On the... On the requests and recommendations for Brickyard Road, Queensgate, we, at this point, I don't think we're ready to make a vote on that. But I'd be interested in hearing from others. Mr. Clark?
I would agree with both of those statements.
All right. Any other comments from any of the commissioners? So I think, let's, let's look at a motion for the Hughes planned property request and the staff recommendation to assign an R7200 designation to that particular parcel. This is in West Hill. I'd like to hear a motion to that and if we're ready to take a vote.
I move that we approve the Hughes request to propose change to R9600 to R7200 as recommended by staff.
Second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
So to be clear, that is, you're going to formulate a recommendation to the City Council to approve the...
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make that...
Yep. We have some influence, but we don't make the final decision here. Now, with regards to the other subarea, I think at this point, you've got some people that are going to email you information. We've, we've heard some new points made this evening. I think we all want to take a little bit of time to think about that, and I'd like to have this brought forward so that we can make a clear recommendation with, not with regards just to these two requests, but...
We have a date. We should probably put a date and make this, make that decision on that date.
So we don't have a meeting next week. What does our agenda look like in December to be able to put this on it?
Oh, I don't have the agenda, the December.
Yeah, December's not in our packet.
Oops. I'm sorry, we didn't have the...
Yeah, I had it in my notes that we were, our next meeting would be December 3rd, two weeks from tonight. What I'm not sure of is just what our agenda looks like for that particular evening and whether or not we can include this on it.
I didn't have a calendar.
I have one on my phone.
Yeah.
So the Wednesdays in December, the 3rd, 10th, 17th, 24th, and 31st.
So are there any, let's say of the 3rd, 10th, and 17th that this item could be put forward on to? How much time, Bruce, do you think you would need to kind of...
Depending on what the commission asked me to prepare, the 10th probably is the best date.
Yeah, I think what we're requesting is just, again, you've got some emails that you're going to be receiving here. We have this additional information that we've heard, and I'd love to have you just briefly summarize it for the record.
Sorry.
And, and then I think we're going to be ready to come forward with both, recommendations on both of the requests in that subarea. So let's say, let's move that to December the 10th?
10th, yes.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion for that, to that effect?
No, because this is a continuing public hearing, but I'm going to grab a bunch, as many cards as I can and pass them out so everybody knows who to contact for that.
All right. Excellent. All right, we had a bit of a breakpoint, but if we're ready to move forward with the other two subareas, let's do that. So at this point, we'll turn the agenda over to Dave Boyd and hear the presentation on the other two.
Before I start my presentation, I wanted to, one, apologize. I just discovered this afternoon that the packets did not include the, we need a Norway, Simons Norway Hills Subarea Plan text section. So I've provided that to the commissioners, and I have three copies that are available for the public here tonight, if they care to share those. I'll put those back here. I also have received three new exhibits that I'd like to enter into the record, and then I'll start my presentation. Exhibit eight is a letter from Patrick and Jennifer Gastelno requesting a rezone on Easton Avenue. Exhibit nine is a letter from Rob Furman. These are all received today, requesting a rezone to his properties on East Riverside Drive. And exhibit 10 is an email from Jack Bentley regarding his rezone request on Norway Hill. So I'll circulate these to the commission. Again, I have a few copies available for the public. I need to make sure I hang on to one for myself, which I do. And then I'll go into my presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to be presenting two subareas. We'll have the initial review of the Anita Simons Norway Hill... Excuse me. We'll have the initial review of the Anita Simons Norway Hill Subarea Plan, which includes several potential land use designation amendments. And this is the second review of the Maywood Beckstrom Hill Subarea Plan, where there are no, no property owner initiated land use designation amendments, so I think that will go fairly quickly. But even though your agenda lists Maywood first, I'm going to go with, we need a Simons Norway Hill first since we have a number of members of the public here to comment on that.
That sounds good.
So Anita Simons Norway Hill is in the far southern end of the city. The yellow is living here, about in the purple one, just to the east or the west of the Brickyard Road, Queensgate Subarea. Sorry. Seems to be turning off on its own. And then Maywood Beckstrom Hill is in, right in the central part of the city, just north of the downtown subarea. The subarea, we need a Simons Norway Hill comprises 898 acres. Potential changes include housekeeping amendments, other amendments to reflect preliminary changes in the planning area-wide elements. There's one staff-proposed land use designation and code amendment, and four property owner requests, including two submitted today. Before considering the property owner requested plan and code amendments, the particular dynamics of this subarea and the requests that were coming in at the last minute, and one of the requests that is potentially being withdrawn at the last minute, caused us to make a recommendation that the Planning Commission formally, that should say, not formerly, but formally adopt a standard process for property owner amendment requests that require legal notice, requiring them to propose the amendment no later than the initial public hearing for the subarea. So, and the reason for this is that for a request that requires public noticing, we need to, that's a 21-day period, the request needs to be posted on the property. We have a fairly compressed schedule for this overall plan and code update, and it's already slipped a fair amount. So we're getting to the point where we really need to be quite disciplined about, about the schedule and not allow too much further slipage. So any requests that come in after that initial public hearing, where the Planning Commission has the opportunity to determine whether they want to consider a request or not, that would just continue to push out that, the consideration of those plan amendments. As it is, we really can't, with plan, with amendments that do require notice, we really can't bring them back to the Planning Commission in less than four weeks because of the comment period, the initial comment period is three weeks, 21 days.
Let me just, let me just make sure I understand what staff is requesting here. So this process change, or adopting this new standard process, is this a change from what we've done in the past?
It's essentially what staff has been, the process that we've been going by as we go through, we've been telling people that if they have a code amendment for a subarea, they need to provide it to Planning Commission, but we thought it would be good to, for Planning Commission to recognize that and adopt that as a standard. Now, you certainly have the flexibility to vary from that if there's a compelling case, but, but I think it's, it's good to get the word out that, that we do need to hear these in a timely fashion for them to be included in this periodic update.
So the initial public hearing for that particular subarea, which would be, which would be what that requested before, how is the public going to be aware of that initial public hearing?
Well, if you, if you do follow this recommendation, we would include that in the December Imagine Not Bothell Notice, so that that would be one avenue, and we could also put that on the website to try to get the word out.
Okay. I mean, I'm certainly just, as a general approach, certainly wanting to keep things moving in a timely manner, but I do want to make sure the public has ample opportunity to be aware of the public hearing and then if, and then if they have a request to be able to respond accordingly. So I just want to make sure how they're supposed to be aware of this.
Well, those are our main modes for informing folks about the overall process, the monthly Imagine Bothell Notice and the website. And we will take a look at the website and make sure that it's easier to find the information that people need. When it does come to proper requests that do require legal notice, rezones in particular and code amendments, those, those have a separate noticing process. We, they're required to post a sign at least 21 days before the official public hearing, which would be typically the second public hearing on that. And although we're using the Imagine Bothell Notice as our official publication of notice, we are, with these property owner requests, these property-specific requests, we are doing a courtesy mailing to property owners within 300 feet of the, of the area. So that's the other way that folks would get notice of a change in their immediate neighborhood.
Okay, so just to clarify again, we're not talking about a rezone request, we're not talking about a code change request, we're talking about an owner amendment request?
Well, rezones and code amendments, development and regulation amendments are, would both fall into, well, actually, I should say, back up, rezones would fall into that.
Rezones would fall into this?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions of Mr. Boyd? Yeah, Commissioner Clark?
Quick question. I, well, maybe more of a comment, maybe you can address it, but I was under the impression that in order to be, the deadline for submitting a comprehensive plan amendment application was, was a long time ago, like earlier in the year, and so I'm curious to know, how is this even an issue? If, if that were the case, we wouldn't be having this discussion right now, I don't think, because...
Yeah, the normal process for a comprehensive plan amendment is that you have to submit the request by October 30th of the, the year before they go to the docket, and that's to give us time to prepare that for council to consider in the docket. This is a different, with the periodic plan and code update that we're going through this year and a half process, to do a major update of the entire plan is a different kind of process, and we've, we've already started this process of accepting amendment requests as we're working through the process, but, but we do feel the need to require a certain amount of structure, just so that we can do the proper noticing and get through the process by the deadline.
Any other questions? So, you know, I don't really, I think I understand what it is you're requesting, and I just want to make sure before I ask the commission to take a vote on this, that, again, this is the initial public hearing, that there's going to be any owner amended requests, and this would include a zoning request, that they propose their amendments no later than the initial public hearing, and that there's been ample notice of that public hearing to the public so that they can be aware of the need to make the request in that timely manner.
That's right.
Commissioner Lee?
So Davey, can you clarify again, the Imagine Bothell, what form that comes in to residents of Bothell?
Yeah, that's circulated by email. I think we, we have had the ability for folks to request that it be mailed, but I don't believe there is anyone getting a mailed copy. I may be wrong at this point, but, and, and anybody can sign up for that on the website or through the...
The Imagine Bothell Notice, I'm going to add something here, Dave, is also posted on our webpage, and there's 12 signs throughout the city that it's placed into the little containers, located throughout, throughout the community where they put the Imagine Bothell Notice every month.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Do you want us to do a motion on this at this point?
I think that would be good to formalize the process and, so we can...
All right. Well, let me ask, are we ready to articulate a motion on this? Commissioner Stebb?
I think as long as the, as the public does have ample notice, then I would, I would support.
Yeah, and my assumption is, is if you're a property owner and you're looking for a zoning change, you have some kind of change you're trying to make, you're going to get familiar with the process, you're going to, you're going to, you're going to proactively investigate, you know, when the public hearing would be on this, and so I think as a matter of process, I'm supportive of it as well, but I'm open to other comments. I want to make sure this is fair, but there is a need for timeliness as well.
I'm ready.
Okay. I'm ready to hear a motion.
Yeah, I move that before the, I move that the Planning Commission fully adopts a standard process for property amendment requests requiring legal notice, require them to propose the amendment no later than the initial public hearing for the subarea.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, thank you.
Motion passes.
So we will get that, that word out as best we can. So I'm going to go through these code amendments, and I'm going to offer, if you like, with, I could introduce each one and take comment on each one if you like, rather than going through the full presentation.
You know, I think, I think I'm ready for you to just go ahead and give your presentation, and then I think we'll, we'll be able to respond to them all.
So the first is the staff-proposed amendment along Riverside Drive. We are proposing that in the R2800 OP zone on the north side of Riverside Drive from just west of 102nd to about the line of 108th, so it's on both West and East Riverside Drive, that we add a, an NB designation to the R2800 OP zoning there. This is the result of multiple inquiries the city has had from microbrewery owner operators who are looking for suitable zones and have identified a couple of sites in this area, and the current zoning, the OP zoning, does not allow that. And in fact, our use charts don't clearly, they don't have a separate category for microbreweries with tasting room. They, they have a category for taverns, which can have up to 50% of the floor area devoted to brewing, or they, we also have breweries which can have a small retail outlet, but neither of those really fits the model of the microbreweries that are currently quite popular. So that was the impetus for it. It wasn't a property owner, this is really business owners looking for a suitable place that... that spurred this. So there's the addition of the NB, there's two parts of the addition of the NB, and then changing the allowable uses in NB zones to include microbreweries with tasting rooms. That would apply citywide to NB zones citywide. So that's number one. Oh, and a contributing factor is that we have heard suggestions that this area with the density of the senior housing particularly and the amount of traffic volume that could use the type of convenience retail that would also be allowed in NB zones. So it's not entirely about microbreweries. The second, and the first property owner amended request is, comes from Wayne Golf Course. They request an amendment to allow development of a new clubhouse and 76 townhomes. That's at least in their conceptual planning, that number could change. On 4.1 acres of their front nine that isn't currently restricted by the open space easement, requiring that it be preserved as recreation-oriented open space, including golf course. So the area is not a separate parcel, but it is an easement that is identified in the construction, I mean, in the conservation easement. And their application is in your Exhibit WS1. Staff recommends that Planning Commission does authorize consideration. And they initially had proposed applying an RAC OPCB zoning to that. But that seemed a bit of overkill. That's the densest zoning designations that we have in the city. And we do have an SR-522 corridor zoning in the downtown subarea that is adjacent to this. In fact, Wayne Golf Course owns a sliver of land along Brickyard Road, not Brickyard Road, Red Brick Road Park, that is zoned SR-5200 corridor. So we suggested that maybe more appropriate rezone would be to adjust the subarea boundary, extend the downtown subarea to include this 4.1 acre parcel, and extend the SR-522 corridor zoning. That's a zoning that allows mixed use. It would allow the things that Wayne Golf Course wishes to have. It has a 35-foot height limit in the shoreline jurisdiction zone and 45 outside of that. I haven't seen anything in their proposals that would require going beyond 35 feet. But that's, and we would do additional analysis of that if Planning Commission chooses to consider this request. A third request, the second property owner-initiated request was from Jack Bentley to rezone two parcels along Northeast 155th Place from R-40,000 to R-9600. Just today, I received an email from Jack Bentley suggesting that perhaps we could table this request or remove it from tonight's agenda. I didn't get a direct, I asked him to provide a direct request to take it. I didn't feel that the email was directive enough for me to suggest that. But I said that I could present his letter to you, and you have that exhibit now. So the commission could, and I'm told that that was his intent, to take it off of the table now. Now, based on your action about only accepting requests up to the first hearing, that would essentially mean taking that off the table for this periodic plan and code update, I think. And staff's recommendation, if you were, if you did want to consider this tonight, whether to proceed with further consideration of this request would be not to. We feel that the, there isn't sufficient support. The other property owner that was included in the request has made it clear that he's not supportive of this request. And Jack Bentley has agreed to remove that property from his request. And we just don't think it's appropriate to do a rezone for a single property here. So we just don't think this one is ready. There may be some point in the future where it might be. But this is another situation where the Planning Commission should give me direction on whether you want to even continue the discussion. And if you do want to continue the discussion about this particular request, Eric Clark has let us know that he is working with Jack Bentley on this, and he should recuse himself and not be in the room for any deliberations that you have.
Thank you.
The, another request that came in just this morning, and another one that will require recusal, is a request from Patrick and Jennifer Gastineau to rezone all the parcels surrounding Easton Avenue, shown in the red dashed outline here, from, the north part is zoned R-5400D SSHO, which is the specialized senior housing overlay. And the south part is R-9600 SSHO. The request is to rezone the entire area to R-5400A, as outlined in the Exhibit WS8 that you just received. Let me back up on that. So we do think, this, like I said, this just came, I just was aware of this yesterday. We just got the formal request today. We really haven't had the chance to do much analysis of this. The letter points out that this rezone would rectify a situation where we have a split-zone parcel here, the one in the green outline. And that would potentially be, the minimal rezone would be just to extend that, the current zoning, R-5400D SSHO, to make that parcel all in one zone. Then, the final one, also received today from Rob Furman, is a request to rezone two parcels in the red dashed outline, south of East Riverside Drive, from R-9600 to R-7200, in order to capture development potential that was lost with the establishment of critical area buffers and match the type of development that exists to the west. So immediately, west is a cul-de-sac that was developed before the critical area buffers. There's a stream that runs right through the backyards of these properties. So that type of development wouldn't be, or that yield wouldn't be possible on these parcels with the 9600 zoning. The requested R-7200 would, in all likelihood, enable them to achieve that unit yield and still respect the steam, stream buffers, which they would be required to do. Then, as you go to the east, there are other developments that have a similar issue. And this development, the furthest to the, I'm sorry, furthest to the west, actually has lot sizes down in the 6,600 square foot range. So the proposal stating that going to R-7200 would be consistent with the kind of newer development that we've seen along that stretch of East Riverside. And again, in our very early analysis, that we, Planning Commission might want to consider, if you do choose to study this one further, looking at applying that to that entire area from the SSHO overlay all the way to 405, it may be appropriate. The other thing, again, we haven't done a lot of analysis, but we do know that there are some steeps, besides the stream corridors that come down here, there are some steep slopes and wetlands along this area that will restrict development on many of these parcels. Again, that's in your Exhibit WS9.
Before we leave that subarea, do all of these requests meet the criteria of the motion that we just passed? Which was that the request for an owner, an owner request needs to be made by the date of the initial review. Well, today is the initial review of this subarea. So is it correct to say that all of these requests meet the motion that we just passed?
That's correct. Maybe the difficult one is if we withdraw one from consideration at tonight's agenda, that puts us in the bind of extending the, when we can bring it back through the, you know. If you don't consider it and decide to either move forward or not, then we can't really do the public noticing for the rest of them, because we want to bring the whole subarea back to you at the same time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I just have one more slide. It gets to the next subarea, the Maywood-Beckstrom Hill subarea. And this is the second review of the subarea, but there were no property owner requests here. The changes in your packet are primarily updates to the transportation section. There are no other plan or code amendments proposed. One issue that we did discuss is that the inclusion of that Lake Pleasant to Canyon Park Trail. And I've since had a chance to talk to the director, who was involved in establishing that, and he does think it is a viable prospect. And when we get to the Country Village subarea, we can consider whether it should be moved into that. But I don't think it requires any particular action or input at this point from Planning Commission.
Okay. So with regards, let's take the last one first, actually. With regards to Maywood-Beckstrom Hill, is there any motion or guidance from the Planning Commission that you need from us on that one?
Just if you don't have any comments or changes, we will move forward with that one as the preliminary recommendation by the Planning Commission for that.
Are there any comments, questions with regards to that subarea for Mr. Boyd?
I do have a question.
Mr. Stebbin.
On Housing and Human Services policies, I think it's MB8. Item number two says, "Support the utilization of schools in the subarea for before and after-school child daycare and as community drop-in centers for older youth." What age are we considering for older youth?
I don't know for sure, but I assume it's in secondary school age grades, yeah.
And is this, if you wouldn't mind my jumping in, is this language that we're actually, haven't I seen this in other subareas?
Yeah, it's actually, I think, in most, if not all, of the subareas.
Okay. Sorry.
I'm just wondering if, and I don't know why I've missed it in the other subareas, but I have. And I'm just wondering if child daycare and 17-year-olds in the same general facility make a whole lot of sense. I don't know, just, I'm asking.
I think the idea is that, is not necessarily that they would be together in the same facility, but just that we explore with North Shore School District the provision of the needs for both of those age groups.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions with regards to this particular subarea? So seeing no further one, I think that we are ready to go ahead and give you the guidance to move forward with that one.
Okay.
At this point, with regards to the Norway Hill subarea, I'd like to open this up to the public and give them a chance to provide any comments, unless you have any other comments or questions for us at this point?
Well, I'm going to suggest that you take these one at a time, because of the issues that we have with.
You mean, one request at a time?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, why don't you, and I'm all right with that, why don't you go back then to the first one?
Okay. So the first one would be the Wayne Golf Course request.
Okay.
And I would also say that we did get letters of comment from some people that commented on multiple.
Exactly.
Requests, and they can certainly feel free to do that. And I'm happy to put up the images of the others. But at least when we get to the point of Planning Commission deliberations on the Bentley request and the Gastineau request, we'll have to ask the affected commissioners to recuse themselves and leave the room, either to the jury room or the lobby.
Understood. So are there any members of the public who would like to come forward and speak to the Wayne Golf Course request? This would be your opportunity to do that. I don't see anyone on that. Oh, all right, please come forward. Could you give your name and address for the record?
My name is Steve Richards, and the address is 16721, 96th Avenue Northeast, Bothell, Washington. I'd like to take a minute here to thank the members of the Planning Committee and the Bothell citizens for the opportunity to present our rezone request. To reiterate, my name again is Steve Richards, and I'm the general manager of the Wayne Golf Course. This is a family-operated business, has been there since 1950. Our request is rezone the four acres. The location is the existing clubhouse and associated parking lot. This does not include the remaining 46 acres, which is called the front nine. The front nine is subject to the conservation easement, which restricts its use to open space activities such as a golf course. Our proposal to rezone the four acre parcel from R-9600 to SR-522 corridor district would allow the development of a new clubhouse, together with residential townhomes. The corridor district best suits our vision with flexibility in mind for mixed use and the creation of individual lots for townhome construction and sale. The golf course, as you may be aware, is suffering financially. The long-term forecast is not encouraging. We need to address crucial factors, the need to attract new players. Current facilities all over the country may be deciding or being forced to simply close their doors. After all these years, the closing of a landmark is not the Richards family preference. We need your help. With the townhome approval, the economic means would become available for improvements of the course itself, the first step necessary in our effort to right the ship at Wayne Golf Course. The clubhouse setting is beautiful, within comparable views of the golf course to Sumamish River. If approved, the rezone would allow us to continue offering one of the city's finest traditions while creating some, simply is something truly unique. And this will complement the existing neighborhood, including Burt Gilman Trail, River, and the Bothell Landing. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Are there any other comments from the public on this particular request? Seeing none, let's move, yes, sir?
Rob Furman, 11203 East Riverside Drive.
Mr. Furman, is this with regards to the Wayne Golf Course?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
No problem, you saw my name.
All right.
No, as sad as it'll be to see any part of that course disappear, we love you playing on it. I totally agree with what happens to happen here. I was at all the meetings when we were doing all the rezoning on the SR-522. And in my opinion, this would fall within that recommendation. And so at least we get to keep the other nine holes, and I'm sure that they'll do a really nice job. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dave, I think we're ready to move to the next request. So the Bentley request, do you want to just, again, just give us a quick status of this and then, well, actually, I don't think we need that. Are there any requests or comments from the public with regards to this particular request? Yes, sir?
Kurt Drapers, 10611, 150. Kurt Drapers, 1061155th Northeast, Washington, or Bothell. I'm the neighbor. The part that is like, I would like to ask this commission and the Planning Commission is how it's possible that on May 14, a request is placed by Jack Bentley, having my property on it, where I have no consent, no agreement, and I'm not in the know. And I find out through a neighborhood email that my name is on this request two weeks ago. I would like to know how that is possible. It's clear that I am very opposed to this. This led to conflict in the neighborhood in 2008 with the previous owners, when Mike Price and Jack Bentley were trying to intimidate the other owners inside the same neighborhood. So I sincerely ask you to deny this request for the sake of the neighborhood. Besides that, I think there is a huge environmental aspect. In the middle of Mr. Bentley's yard, exactly here, is a well. And this well already poses water problems.
Yeah, we need you to speak at the microphone.
There is a laser pointer. You can use the mouse.
Okay. They're already, so, not sure how this one works, but, yeah, thank you.
Use the mouse.
All right. All right. Well, it's in the middle where the name is, actually. So that's easy. The neighbor below me already has water problems. If we're going to put more concrete there, and with Jack's plan to create a garage under his living level, at least that's how he describes it to me, it's like, this is insane. The house that I bought had a pool, which was added later. We loved the pool. But if you talk to Gil Hasselberg, who lives below me, he will tell you that his rose garden right now is a swimming pool, for the same reason. If we put on more concrete, more roads, without fundamental work in waterworks and sewer, this will be a disaster. And I'm not even talking about the people who are below that, below the river, the water ponds that is below us, which functions as a buffer. All right. So I don't think it serves the neighborhood. I have serious doubts about the legality of the request. And I sincerely would like an answer on that. I also would like to know why a certain commissioner has to be excused for Jack Bentley. That was a remark that was made earlier. I don't know what that means. I'm sorry. I'm not very well informed about what's going on. But it's, so I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So first of all, we've recognized your request that you're opposed to this, you're opposed to this request. We understood that. As far as the process that went through in terms of any type of initial profession that you were supportive, but now not, I'm totally unaware of that. What I am aware of is that you are opposed to this. So understood and recorded. As far as the commission being recused for any particular request, that's actually very standard with the Planning Commission, that if there is any particular request or initiative in front of us in which that particular Planning Commissioner has some type of personal knowledge or personal involvement, they are there to recuse themselves and not be involved in voting on that particular request.
Do I interpret that as conflict of interest?
Yeah, you could interpret it that way.
Having anything to do with a mortgage company?
Can I address that? So it's actually more of a question of appearance of conflict of interest. And it's not really, doesn't really apply to knowledge, particular knowledge of a project. But in this case, Eric Clark is working as a consultant to Jack Bentley on this particular project. So again, once you, if you go into deliberations, he should recuse himself and leave the room. So, and we're really doing this out of an abundance of caution. This is a legislative matter, so it's not a judicial matter. So it's a bit of a gray area in terms of the requirement for recusal, but because of the potential appearance of conflict of interest is why we suggest that commissioners that are involved in any proposal do recuse themselves.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Booth, can I add to that?
Sure.
Mr. Clark.
I'll just, just to set the record straight, I did request to be recused from this discussion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Ann Egard, and I live at 1652414th Avenue Northeast. I do not support Mr. Bentley's request to simply remove this from the agenda until you can discuss it further. Essentially, this is coming forth after six years. And it basically met with, as Mr. Draper related, a great deal of opposition on Norway Hill. And it did not go anyplace. In addition, it came up again, I believe it was last year, again, and because of certain circumstances with Mr. Price's property, which Mr. Draper now owns, it was again removed, but not withdrawn. So I think it is time to stop this and basically withdraw the request and not consider it any further. Because what we're doing is just constantly dragging up old information and bringing it forth and just putting a new cover letter on it. And each time it involves, the neighborhood may or may not know about it until a very short time before it comes forth. So I ask that you simply not consider it and not remove it and bring it up again. The second issue is this appearance, what is called appearance of fairness doctrine. And my understanding, although I'm not an attorney, but my understanding is because this is a specific rezon on a specific piece of property, it is not area zoning, and it is essentially a specific rezon, then if Mr. Clark does have an interest or an involvement in it, he would need to excuse himself. Thank you for considering it.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the public? Yes, sir?
Good evening. Brett Carlstedt, 15622105th Avenue Northeast. So we're supporting the other two speakers here tonight to remove the Bentley action without further consideration. I would ask the Planning Commission to reflect on the age of this development. So I believe it was a four lot. Is that a short plot in the city of Bothell? Short plot?
Yes.
And touted as architecturally designed and laid out and very specific houses that are all of a similar nature. It's a fairly new development, I believe, for the city. And to come back in now without decades passing and turn it into five lots as requested changes the character and makes me call into question why this initial plat and development was approved as a short plat. The road accessing these four lots comes between two other residential properties that you can see that are longstanding. It works. If the density starts getting higher, the initial one that was brought forth a few years back where it would have added two more lots, it starts creating additional burdens upon the area. It seems unwise. It seems to be in alignment with staff recommendation, creating an island. It doesn't make sense. We're the property immediately north of the Bentlers with the large parcel of land and the animals. So we would support earlier comments and staff recommendation to remove this from further consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Any others? Yes, sir?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Paul Matthews, and I come here as a brand-new resident and homeowner to the city of Bothell. I purchased the property just to the right of the red, upper red square one month ago. And I apologize, I just learned two days ago about this question to rezon, so I don't have an extensive knowledge base of the zoning and the history. But what I do know is that I chose this property specifically because of its privacy and seclusion. I was assured by my real estate attorney at the time that it could not be further developed, which is one of the reasons that I purchased the property. I live in downtown Seattle in a condominium, and I bought this property so that I could have the attributes of the privacy and was willing to endure an hour-long commute so I could have this. So I am here to offer my dissent in the opinion that it should be a higher residential density, and I appreciate you listening to that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments with regards to this particular request? Okay, hearing, seeing no more, why don't you just go forward to the next one?
Lost my mouse. There we go. Okay.
Are there any comments from the public with regards to the Easton Avenue rezone request? All right, seeing none, Commissioner Gastonau.
Are we going to, are we going to move on these, or do you plan to move these to another?
We are not going to move on these this evening.
Okay, because at some point, I'd like to, you know, make my presentation on this request, so.
Are you ready to do that this evening?
I might as well. Why don't we go through if we can, well, why don't I just do it?
Well.
It's up to you. Chair, if you, we have people in the.
Yeah, I mean, I think at this point, we're really, I want to hear from the public on these requests.
No problem.
And I think it would be best, I mean, you've met the date of today to be included, and I think that we can have your information for us at a future meeting.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Let's move forward. Are there any requests or comments from the public with regards to the Furman rezone request? Yes, ma'am?
Ann Egard, again, 16524105th Northeast. We've lived in this area almost 36 years now, and before that in Bothell. So we're very familiar with the area and with the property, and particularly with the streams that come down off of Norway Hill. And I do not support the request to rezon this from 9600 to 7200. And that, because that, it's rarely that you capture what is being lost in a critical area by upzoning the property. That's part of the, part and parcel of the property itself. And besides that, the other areas that have developed in that area, I believe, but I didn't research it because I didn't know that it was coming up until tonight, is R9600. But even more, I would totally oppose putting the SSHO overlay over this whole area. While we all know that the senior housing that is there now is used and appreciated by many people, it does have significant impacts on the area. And I don't think that this is an, we should be extending it over this large of an area. So I'm very much opposed to the SHO, SHO, SSHO overlay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Please be a focus.
Sure.
Again, Rob Furman, 11203 East Riverside Drive. I'll just go ahead and read something quick, and then I'll make some comments. It's requested that the zoning designation R9600 be changed to R7200 for these two parcels. East Riverside Drive between I-405 and 102nd Avenue is an eclectic mix of zoning and actual uses. There is not one consistent historic pattern of development or usage. It is an eccentric variety that has continued to change with each new decade. There are mobile home parks, R4000, next to large homes, R8400, condominiums, R2000, and multi-story offices, R28000OP, light industrial duplexes, a senior center, a medical facility, and senior housing, older houses, a bed and breakfast, small houses on large lots, big houses on small lots, and very small houses on very small lots, 5400D. Additionally, homes built along this roadway within the past several years with the current R9600 zone in this wonderful neighborhood, including 106th Avenue Northeast, are lots that are as small as 5,358 to 6,600 square feet with very comfortable large homes that fit quite nicely with all the homes in the neighborhood along this corridor. Adjusting the zoning size to match the historic actual building pattern for much of the area would not create a housing type that would be incongruous with the surrounding area. In fact, it would be more representative of the traditional home sizes of the older homes along East Riverside Drive, especially with what exists with the very nice homes on Easton Avenue. Easton has lot sizes as small as 6,650, for example. In addition, with the requisite setbacks, the area between different-sized lots will be insignificant and unnoticed as it will remain single-family zoning immediately adjacent to single-family homes, as opposed to multifamily or industrial, as is already pervasive along the short segment of East Riverside Drive. 7,200-square-foot lot sizes will fit nicely with the current actual uses of this small area of the city and would allow to have a similar feel for the homes that are built next door. The issue here is here is that this area was all, R4 before the city went through and changed the zoning requirements. I just hit that.
Oh.
Bruce?
That's okay. We're with you.
Okay. But I was going to maybe point out a couple things if the mouse was working. Sorry about that, Dave. The stream that was talked about, that has one of the main issues, literally was moved, went down this property. And when they did this development, they moved it outright to the edge of the property line. When they were doing that, nobody knew it was going to create an issue for the property next door. Since then, they've also put a huge culvert down the middle of the cul-de-sac that goes directly into the river. The city had myriads of fishing, environmental engineers come in, et cetera, who said, because literally the patios and backyards of that property next door are built up to the stream, that the, in their opinion, you know, having huge buffers where there's currently a lawn really didn't help for environmental purposes. What we're seeking to do is, when the property is developed someday, have a consistent look and feel with the other houses. Because of the current, because of the change, when it went to R9600 from R4, those 10 houses that are next door to us now, they might be able to yield two or three houses. But what's built there is what was designated to be there. The property has a sewer line running through the center of it. It's on East Riverside Drive. There's a bus line on it. You look in all the comp plan for the goals that the city's trying to meet, we're right next to the freeway. So if anything, the density should be going up to meet the Growth Management Act goals. And all we're trying to do is preserve a similar feel for the neighborhood when the property gets developed out. And that's all I have to say. You want to ask any other questions?
No, but thank.
I do have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Gastonau.
Mr. Furman, I just heard from staff when they were talking about that did. Mr. Furman, I, I just heard from staff when they were talking about that did, were you proposing, are you, are you a propose to the senior housing overlay if they wanted, if this, if we wanted to extend it this far?
We're, we're open to making it the neighborhood consistently flow. Literally right now, if the property was developed out, it would have yields of maybe one-half of the property next door. We're not particularly looking for the senior housing overlay for any particular reason at all. It might make sense since all the senior, you know, since the senior center's there, the medical facilities are there, the sidewalks now come down to our property from there, the seniors come down, because we have an acre of flowers, they come down and like to see the flowers and the goats and stuff. But we're open to, we just want to make sure that when it gets developed someday, that it has the same feel as to what was there when we were purchasing the property and what, what neighbors would expect to be built there. We're not looking for multifamily or, you know, something other than is similar next door and down the street.
All right. Thank you. No further questions. Are there any other comments from the public with regards to this particular request? Yes, sir?
Michael Hughes, 8422 Northeast 190th Street, Bothell. Up until recently, I owned this property right here. Where'd he go? Right here. And for ten years, we, we had to deal with the stream that was moved from here to here. The problem with the stream was the people in King County upstream, primarily the church and apartments up there. Tremendous amounts of water that would come down the hill, scour, and bring sand and silt down to these properties in here. These houses in here, these row of houses in this area, capriciously would build their patios, change the stream, put rocks in the stream, whatever, and when the water came down, clog the beehive drainage on East Riverside Drive, caused the houses on, over here in this, to be flooded. This property, approximately 1949, granted the city an easement for stormwater. And over the ensuing years, that's now been developed into a salmon-bearing stream. I was not permitted to do any development there. The metal culvert was pulled out by the city. The silt and trash that came down the hill clogged my land, clogged my property. In frustration, I finally sold the property. But the city has spent a tremendous amount of money in putting the stormwater down here. There's a, the stream is supposed to come down here. The people up here would divert the stream so that they could have a nice babbling brook down their backyard. Well, that babbling brook brought all the silt to my property. Again, I sold the property out of frustration. My, one of my other frustrations is the fact that this wasn't developed. There's no walkway. There is no walkway from Bothell to Woodenville. You can go, you can walk on the Burt Gilman Trail. I call it the Trail of Death. Walking down there in the middle of the night, you certainly wouldn't do it at night. There's only a wooden, there's only a, a small dirt path to go down East Riverside Drive, and it's totally unlighted. So to support further development down there, wholeheartedly, I'm, I'm a big believer in, in building up the city so that we don't have to go all the way to the mountain tops. I, I know the Furmans have been, because they wanted to and they felt very, because they felt that that stream was important, when the storms came, they were out there with their shovels in the middle of the night cleaning out the drains. I think 7,200, further development down there would lead greater personality to that side of the river. I, I think the senior housing in Bothell has been tremendous. Kudos to the city for developing it. But I also think that the, the other property owners down there have the right to develop their properties and have some consideration and shouldn't be, shouldn't be penalized because of other problems upstream. That's all I've got.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any, yes, Mr. Boyd?
I just didn't want to clarify. When I talked about extending the, the rezone, the R-7,200 or 8,400, whatever we wind up proposing, from the SSHO boundary over to 405, I wasn't suggesting that the city supported extending the SSHO boundary and, and applying this here.
All right.
And neither, neither did the application indicate that.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah.
Any other members of the public that would like to speak? This is your opportunity. I'd like to thank each and every one of you for coming this evening and for your comments. I can assure you, they are heard. You have something to speak to that, please?
Do you want the map?
Thank you. Anna Guard again. I, I do support the microbrewery down there, but I, I think that I am concerned about just applying the NB zone to the, to the 2,800, wherever there's the 2,800 zoning, which is a significant amount of zoning down there, because of all the uses that the neighborhood business zone does allow. And there is very significant traffic problems along there. It took me about ten minutes this afternoon, around 4:30, to get from down 108th, which is how we get down to Bothell, and get onto Riverside Drive to cross the bridge. The traffic is backed up, sometimes it's clear back to 108th, particularly between 3 o'clock and about 6 o'clock, and equally so in the morning. The last thing we need is a neighborhood business along there, which would bring more business, more cars into the area. What, but I do support the microbrewery and I think there is some, some, definitely some uses that should come in there. So I would suggest you look at some, if possible, some kind of an overlay to the OP 2,800 that would allow such uses as this, but not go to attaching the NB zone to it, if that's possible. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Thank you. This is Jim Jamison. I live on 22329 53rd Avenue Southeast. Don't live in the city limits of Bothell, but I've lived in the Bothell area for twenty-seven years. All my kids have gone to Bothell High School. And I am the owner of Foggy Noggin Brewing. I addressed the city council in September about East Riverside on opportunity to look at this area. I've gone to the planning commission on two properties on East Riverside that I think were very advantageous for adding the flavor of bringing a microbrewery to Bothell, adding a little bit of neighborhood feel and adding just to what Bothell has to offer to its citizens. I currently live in Snohomish County, Inc. I live in a residential area and my brewery is on my personal property. One of my challenges was to fit into the community, which is very important to me. 53rd Avenue Southeast is a dead end. It does not connect through. Traffic's a huge concern. What we have been able to do is, through traffic studies with the county, I've had them actually bring in equipment to measure traffic flow, speed patterns. And when we're open, we have the least amount of traffic on our street than the rest of the week. We have the slowest traffic patterns during the times that we're open as well. We've also created an environment where people have gotten to know each other, a community feel that did not exist. Our street did not know each other. It was a street that was a bunch of people who lived there. You know, it's a, it's an R-5 zoning and there's a lot of space, but they just didn't get out to each, know each other. Right now, we've got a community that people like each other. They talk to each other. We've got a community involvement group that we are on top of, you know, strangers that are in our neighborhood, keeping everybody safe. It's also been a desirable area to buy. So when houses go on the market, they sell very fast. It's a friendly area. It's created a, a real unique flavor. We're not going to give that up. We want to keep that because it's a very unique experience. But we'd like to bring this into Bothell. I'm committed to Bothell and I'm not entertaining any other offers from other surrounding areas that want my business to be located there. Snohomish, Woodenville, Kenmore, Malt, being clear of you, have all been actively trying to get my business to go in their areas. I want to stay in Bothell. I think we have a unique flavor that we can offer to the city for dynamic improvement and just quality of life. Last weekend, we hosted a beer historian and British beer author in our tasting room. It was a, it was an event that brought people from many states that wanted to come to our area for a cultural experience. This is not just about drinking beer. It's not about getting drunk. It's about learning, communicating, and having a rich environment that improves everybody's lives. I think this is a fantastic area. What we have right now in Bothell is we have hotels and we have nothing for people to spend their time doing for pleasure and leisure. Where do they go? They go to Woodenville. Everybody comes to Bothell to stay. They go to Woodenville for the, for the wineries and for the microbreweries. Let's keep some business in Bothell. Let's let people enjoy their lives in Bothell and let's spend some money in Bothell. As far as, as long as we've been open, four and a half years, we're the first brewery in the area. Red Hook is in Woodenville. They've been there the longest. But since we've opened up, we've brought in five other microbreweries into the Woodenville market. We all support each other. It's a great destination area. And I just think this would be a great community advantageous advantage for Bothell to have a beer distribution area, making beer, having a tasting room, creating a great culture and environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jamison. Really appreciate it.
Chair, could I, you want to ask me a question?
Yeah, Commissioner Clark.
I just have one quick question. Is your current location open to the public?
Our current location?
Yes.
Yes, we're zoned residential occupancy for business, and so we meet all the Snohomish County guidelines. We have a commercial building where the brewery is on our residence and our, our garage is a converted tasting room, which is also commercial. And we have to get our occupancy every year with the fire marshal making his, his rounds and making sure we meet all the requirements.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the public? Again, I appreciate every one of you and, and the feedback. It is listened to, I can assure you. Just some, some, some comments from the chair. Some of the subarea plans and requests go very quickly, others not so much. And this one in particular, I think because of the, the nature of this particular subarea, the, the geography of it, the history of it, the, as well as the potential future of it, I think that it lends itself to some great opportunities, but also differing approaches to how to, to how to craft that future. And so we are attempting to listen to all of that. I, speaking personally as one of the planning commissioners, I know I, in hearing all this, I think about the cities, the citywide growth strategy. I think about each subarea strategy. I think about the history and the vision for the future, the compatibility with surrounding areas and its history, as well as we do want to innovate and we want to, we don't want to just, we, we can't not move forward, but how do we move forward and keep the character of Bothell that we all love? We do have a need for protection of natural areas, but we have a need, need to grow and increase capacity. And along with that comes sometime a need to increase density. The, one thing I know in particular, I'm not a resident of this particular subarea, but I do know it quite well, and water management coming off that hill is a big deal. And we need to, for any type of future homeowner, property owner, developer, make sure that we don't make the problem any worse than it is and that we actually make it better. It's possible that actual development could improve that, but we want to make sure the engineering is really right. And we've got some developments that have been built there where it wasn't done right. And we've, we've had some unhappy homeowners because of that. Just a, just a comment. The comments around traffic are key. And when I think of traffic, I now only think of the afternoon traffic that was mentioned, but also access to a business, to, to help it be successful. If you have terrible traffic, as good as a microbrewery as you might have, you're gonna go, you know what, I'm gonna go somewhere else. So traffic and, and the, the correct roads and strategy for having the right roads. I also think about public safety. Right now, we have a fire station that is currently on the north side of the river that services the south side of the river. They have a very narrow two-lane bridge to go across. You have an emergency call. There's a real problem getting an aid car across that bridge to where it needs to be. So we have a lot of senior citizens that we need to think about in terms of public safety. So as you can tell, there's a lot to consider. And I can assure all of you and I'm, I think I'm speaking for all of the, those of us up here, that we're gonna try to weigh all of this. And it's not necessarily gonna make everybody happy because there's different, different opinions, but I can assure you, we will do our very best. We're not ready to make a, a decision, even a recommendation on whether to move forward. I don't feel that way. In, in, Mr. Boyd's looking at me sideways. So you tell me, you, you are looking for guidance as to whether we even study these further?
Yeah. Without that, we don't really have any marching artists to do further analysis on these. So basically, we're asking you to decide which of these, if any, or if all you want to, us to bring back to you, do public noticing so that we're, we're sure that we're reaching everybody within the immediate area of these proposals. Otherwise, we're kind of stuck in a holding pattern.
So I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners up here on the, on the podium. Are there any comments with regards to any of the specific requests as to whether we move forward or not move forward? Commissioner Stedman?
Regarding the, the Bentley property?
Can, can I just interject here? Again, since we have these issues with the appearance of fairness doctrine, I suggest that you, you take these one at a time and, so that you can devote a block to each one and, and so that the, the commissioners that need to recuse themselves can do so.
Okay. So if we're gonna have any further discussion on the Bentley property, then I guess, Commissioner Clark, we're gonna ask you to recuse yourself. Thank you. You can turn the light on in there. You don't have to, you don't have to sit in the dark. All right, Commissioner Stedman?
I just have a, a question more than anything else. If it is postponed, I understand Jack Bentley did not want it withdrawn per se, but if it is postponed, when would the next opportunity be for him or us to address this again?
If, if it's postponed, well, our feeling is that if, if it's, if we don't go forward with it as now, means that we don't go forward with it as part of this periodic plan and code update. So the next opportunity then would be for him to apply by the end of October of next year and to, to be put on the docket for the beginning of, at the beginning of 2016.
Based on his email, I'm, I'm looking at his email from today where he's saying, let's remove it from the agenda for this evening. I'm, I'm gonna suggest that, that we take that approach and remove it from the agenda this evening and he can address it again in October of next year.
Any other comments with regards to that? I think we should take a motion to that effect.
Well, just, I have a comment.
Commissioner Gastelno?
We made a decision tonight. We adopted some rules. We made, I made a motion and we adopted those tonight. And if he wasn't here tonight, he would not know those rules. And so just long as we are aware that we're doing something and he can say, come back and say, hey, you guys adopted something tonight. And I'm not, you know, I, I'm not, you know, from what we've seen on the Bentley, this is not something I'm coming out saying I'm supporting. I'm just saying, we had adopted some certain rules tonight without him having the opportunity to, to discuss, you know, but, so that's where I'm at on that. I just want us to make sure we're all aware of that when we take this vote.
I think that's a, I think that's a fair comment.
Yeah. I mean, he, he meets the criteria of, of, of being considered. I don't think we're, we're saying that. We're also looking at his email where it, there's both kind of the... We're also looking at his email where it, there's both kind of the, I guess, as I would read it, I want to make it clear, I'm not ready to withdraw, but, but he's not ready to consider it further at this point. I, I'm a little, I don't quite understand.
Dave, do you have any more insight or anything on your comment?
Well, I'd just like to say that I made it clear that staff would be recommending that, that if you don't choose to proceed with this at this time, that, that the window for this plan and code update would be closed, so.
That's a different picture. And in your opinion, he understood that and understood that it's going to be another 10 months or so, 11 months before he has a chance to address it again, or?
I, I can't say that for sure, but.
Okay.
Make sure I understand your point, Mr. Gastineau.
I, just, just, I just wanted to make sure that we understood that the way we've, we're, when we move forward tonight, those, those, we will be notifying or, we're, we're saying that his, his withdrawal takes him out of the running during this because he's not valid tonight. Is that right, Dave? That's kind of, you explained it, you kind of had a catch 22 in there, right?
Well, that's how, how I would, I would say if, if we, if we're not ready to move forward with, with the other, we need assignments, Norway Hill code amendments, that, that that train has, has, has left the station.
Well, wait, I'm, I'm making sure I understand. We, we're not talking about any of the other requests. We're just talking about the, the Bentley request right now.
Well, our hope is that we'll get clear marching orders on all four of these requests, and we, then we can move on with noticing of the ones that, that you do want to consider as part of this periodic plan and code update, and not on any that you're not ready to, to initiate.
Mr. Fleet.
I guess, and this is just my comment on it before you, I guess, I guess we have like, it seemed like we had four, like adjoining neighbors who were, had, were quite opposed to this, I guess, and they showed up here tonight, and we're kind of given a, an email today saying, I don't want to move forward, but, so I don't, I don't know. I think that's, it just doesn't seem.
That's kind of my thought as well. That is, yes, he met the criteria that Commissioner Gastineau was referring to. Yes, and he meets the criteria of the motion that we passed, but we're looking at something beyond that. We're looking at what we heard tonight as well as his own email. So I think we're ready for a motion on this. So I, Commissioner Stedman, proceed with making a motion.
I make a motion that we postpone any further action on Jack Bentley's property until, well, until he reapplies, which basically would be 2015, and that we do not include that in the, in the subarea plan.
Second. All, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Clark can rejoin.
If we're going to, if we're going to get an up or down on this, can I get a chance to make my public comment on mine?
Well, I, I don't think we are. I don't, what.
Well, moving forward, he's asking us to consider, are, are we only saying that we're not going to consider the one, but all the rest of them we're going to consider moving forward?
Yes, we are. That's exactly what we're doing.
Okay, then never mind.
Yep. And so let's go forward with, I, I think with regards to the other, the Easton Avenue, the Wayne Golf Course, Riverside, Riverside Drive, and the other requests, the Furman requests, I think at this point, we, we are ready to study them further. And so we're not ready to pass a motion to the, you know, approve or not approve the request, but we are definitely ready to ask staff to study them further.
And to provide public notice.
Yep. So can I hear a motion to that effect? Yeah, Commissioner Clark.
Can I add something? So one thing I did notice was that the public spoke about all of those proposals, but we, as a, as a commission, didn't have a chance to give our feedback about what we saw today on those specific things.
Wait, you really feel you didn't have the chance to give your feedback?
Well, we, we didn't, there was no, there was a discussion after the, yeah, I, I feel like on the specific proposals, on the other one, we did, but on this, these specific proposals, I, I never did.
Okay. I certainly did not intend to, to not provide any opportunity for feedback from the commission, so if you feel the need to provide that.
Well, let me, let me ask, I, I do want to give feedback. I'm not sure if, we've been here for two and a half hours. Is it, is it appropriate to do that tonight? Because I don't really think that you have any guidance from us at this point.
You know, I guess I, I would like to hear from staff on this, where, you know, in this particular, you know, kind of your unique status on this particular request, just what is your status in terms of being able to provide feedback?
Okay, so we're not talking about Bentley now. We're talking about the other four.
I'm not talking about Bentley. I'm talking about, I'm talking about the other ones. I have feedback on Bentley. I'm talking about all of the other.
Okay. All right.
And again, I would say that we should at least deal with the Gastineau request. If there's going to be any, any deliberations or any direction given, and, and give Pat a chance to recuse himself, so, so that we can, and then you can, you can deal with the other three as a group if you wish.
Yeah, okay. Is, I mean, do we really, I guess I would just say at this point, I'm not asking for greater feedback, really. I wanted us, this, tonight to be where we listened. We could provide some overall strategic guidance to our thinking, but nothing specific on any of the requests.
I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is I thought I heard Dave say earlier that he, they needed some direction or they were going to be kind of in a, in a holding pattern. And I'm not, I don't know that we've given you that direction on all of the other proposals.
We at least need direction on whether you want us to proceed on these. If you, if you have input that you'd like to provide us before we start doing more in-depth analysis, I'd like to hear that.
I guess I just suggest, can your feedback be provided at a subsequent meeting? I mean, this is.
Absolutely. Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make it clear that there is, there is feedback. I'm not sure if everybody else besides me does.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm happy to provide at a future meeting or at, or via email or whatever the case may be, but I do have some, some questions and some, and some ideas.
Absolutely. I mean, we're, we're continuing these forward. We're going to study them further, and so there'll be many opportunities for your feedback. Commissioner Cabe.
Yeah, no, I just agree with Commissioner Clark. I felt sort of the same way. I wanted to provide a little feedback today, but between now and the next meeting, whether it's via emails or we discuss that further, I just want to make sure we have a chance to kind of.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep. So I, I don't think we need to go request by request at this point.
Okay.
All right. So at this point, I think we're ready to wrap this and continue the public hearing to, yes, Commissioner Cabe.
Sorry, sorry. One recommendation, because I thought you brought up a good point. Commissioner Clark, just direction for staff before the next meeting. It'd be nice, on the proposals that we received this morning, if we can get those fully vetted, I guess, would be the one, one piece of information. Like, I'm sure Commissioner Gastineau will have a time to speak and go through your proposal, but it'd be nice if, you know, they had some more background information along with what was provided in the handout prior to the meeting.
Supported that. Yes. Yes. So I think at this point, a motion to continue the public hearing on the periodic plan.
Yeah, I move that we continue the public hearing of the 2015 periodic plan and code update to Novem-
December 3rd.
December 3rd.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We have no study session this evening, no old business. Any other reports from staff?
None this evening.
All right. Any other reports from members? At this point, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
We are adjourned.